Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the wall over here in the chamber. There's also an automatic defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marine Boyle, Commissioner Mike Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. I see you there, so. You may be on mute, Commissioner Morgan, but he's present. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
And Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 26, 2021. And item B, call for a meeting set Tuesday, February 9, 2021, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Voting yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Morgan voting virtually all their commissioners in person.
Next is item C, citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions, items D and E. An adjournment. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Voting yes.
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Morgan voting virtually all their commissioners in person.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marine Boyle, Commissioner Mike Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item 1, minutes and claims. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 26. There's also minutes from our tri-county legislative breakfast on Monday, January 25, and minutes of the pre-board meeting on Monday, January 25. And then we have B, the approval of the claim submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, February 2, 2021. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Morgan voting virtually all their commissioners in person.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through I. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Boyle, Mike Boyle?
Yes. It's really not so much a question, but it's item F, as in Frank. I looked at it, and it's 79 pages long, and it's pretty lengthy. And if you haven't read it yet, it's something that we probably ought to have available for citizens as well. But it's really a comprehensive, it is really, that's what it says, it is a comprehensive plan for juvenile care. So it's a good document to review. So I just make that comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
I vote yes.
Voting yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Morgan voting virtually all their commissioners in person.
Next is recognition and proclamations. We have a resolution recognizing February 2021 as Black History Month in Douglas County, and Commissioner Rogers and I are going to share in reading of this resolution. Whereas Black History Month began in 1915, half a century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States, and grew out of Negro History Week and creation of noted historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African Americans. And whereas with the Civil Rights Movement and a growing awareness of Black identity, Black History Month, or National African American History Month, evolved into an annual celebration of achievements by Black Americans and a time for recognizing the central role of African Americans in U.S. history. And whereas each year, Black History Month has a different theme and focus, which is set by the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, an organization founded in 1915 by Carter G. Woodson. And whereas, the 2021 theme for Black History Month is "The Black Family: Representation, Identity, and Diversity," and will focus on ways in which Black families have been negatively stereotyped and also separated from their birthplaces through the atrocity of slavery and the lasting effects this has had. And...
Whereas African Americans from all walks of life have greatly contributed to the success of our nation throughout its history, and they have made indelible marks through their efforts as artists, scientists, educators, business people, influential thinkers, members of the faith community, athletes, political and government leaders, and so many other walks of life. And whereas despite the many reminders of inequality in 2020, the push for racial equity continues to gather momentum through efforts such as Black Lives Matter, which has been called the largest movement in U.S. history, and has been nominated for the 2020 Nobel Peace Prize for bringing forward a new consensus and awareness about racial injustice. And whereas, remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead, and a time to acknowledge the courageous fight for the rights, liberties, freedoms for all, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners celebrates Black History Month and encourages all Americans to learn about the heritage and achievements of African Americans. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of the Douglas County Commissioners that this board hereby recognizes February 2021 as Black History Month in Douglas County and further honors the tremendous contributions and achievements made by African Americans, and I would move for approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Is there any questions or comments? Please, yes. Larry?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I don't want to be misunderstood, and it is hard to understand words sometimes with these. But I stand against part of this resolution, and only part. The part that... This might upset some people, but the part about Black Lives Matters. We need to discuss that, because most people do not know that the founders of Black Lives Matters are admitted Marxists. And Marxism is antithetical to our Constitution, our way of life, even with the Freedom of Speech Article 1, because it is against our nature and our freedom. The symbol for Marxism is the raised fist. Now, I don't know how many people of color realize that. But because they're trying to move us to a democracy, they're moving to mob rule, which is seen on the streets of Omaha. And that raised fist upsets an awful lot of people like me. I don't want Marxists running around the streets of Omaha. And I will not grant them a Nobel Peace Prize. Marxists have murdered millions of people. And I hope that when people of color learn their history of that, that they won't take to the streets because they're angry that the Black Lives Matters movement took over their movement. I buy into Martin Luther King. That was taken over by some bad characters, and his message was changed to be one of democracy in crowds, which turns usually to tyranny. If I've got another minute or so, I'd like to read something out of the Trumpet magazine regarding democracy to anarchy, which those usually turn into, but what revolution can mean. And here in Omaha, we have a magazine, The Reader, which very prominently on the front shows people with their hand in the air, and the big bold letters "Revolution." That's got to stop. That's pitting us against each other. But anyway, revolution can mean a sudden political change, but it can also refer to the cyclical orbiting of a body around an axis, a movement that occurs repetitively, predictably. The correlation is fitting, because for 6,000 years of human history, suffering under poor governance has inflamed the desire for change or democracy, which has sparked hope in a new regime. The promise of progress has motivated almost every election, puts, coup, and revolution in history, whether it's the French in 1789, the Bolsheviks in 1917, the Iranian hardliners in 1979, the Nazis in 1933, or the Islamic State in 2016. No leader ever sets out to create a legacy of same-old-status quo failure, yet with frustrating consistency. This is precisely what they end up achieving, or worse. And the suffering resumes, and the cycle repeats. So let's talk honestly about that. I would prefer that you strike out the Black Lives Matters reference to the Nobel Peace Prize in honor of our founding fathers. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I usually wouldn't respond, but I need to put on the record that Black Lives Matters founders are not Marxists. And the fist movement you're talking about is not owned by Marxist symbols. It was used to fight apartheid. It was a symbol people held up to fight apartheid in South Africa. It was used for Black Power movements. It's not owned by Marxists, and the Black Lives Matters founders are not Marxists. And if your source is the Trumpet, and I'm not saying for dialogue, I'm just saying to correct the record, if your source is the Trumpet, I mean, the front page cover of the trumpet.com says that Trump is coming back. So basically, that's where I'm at.
Larry, you're out of order.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Please vote. Larry, you're out of order. Please vote. Thank you.
I vote yes.
I vote yes. PJ?
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Morgan voting virtually all their commissioners in person.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to presentations. We do have a COVID and vaccine plan update presented to us by Dr. Adi Poor, who is going to present to us via Zoom. I think we lost her.
I think so, too. Maybe she'll come back in.
For those on Zoom, we're just waiting for Dr. Poor to be able to hook back in here. So it'll be just a minute.
Don't forget that under GH and other legislation, can we add to talk about LB-586?
Since Dr. Poor has not been able to hook back in, I think we will move on to legislation. We have, or to committees, I should say. And then, oh, she's, hang on. Here she is. Dr. Poor, I think we see you. There you are. Okay, never mind. We'll go with Dr. Poor giving her update. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just got kicked off again, so this is what's happening. So I'm just going to give you a quick update, and I just got some information. So this week, we are in the fortunate situation where we are starting to open up clinics across Douglas County for those 80 years and above for seniors. And we have an appointment system that went up starting last Friday. We are full for this entire week, today, tomorrow, through Friday. We still have openings on Saturday. And I just got a note back, so this morning at 9:00 was the first time we opened for our seniors at our church, Community Christ Church site. And Phil just texted me and said, everything is really going well. And you know, that is our biggest concern, is that we are here for the seniors, that we are making it easy for them, especially those who are elderly, who may have some underlying challenges and so on. So I'm really, really happy to hear that. As you know, we have those four clinics with partnerships through our healthcare systems. We have one around 144th and Millard Avenue that is run by Nebraska Medicine and is open two days a week. And then we have the Christ Community Church, that's still kind of a short-term site at this time. And we have that one open also for two days in a week, that is Tuesday and Wednesday from 9 to 5. Then we have CHI Emmanuel Medical Center, and that one is up, of course, on 72nd and Swanson. It's Wednesday and Fridays from 9 to 5. And we have the Creighton University Rasmussen Center, 702 North 17th Street, and that one is open on Saturdays beginning February 6 from 9 to 5. Now, that location still has openings, and we would encourage those who are 80 years and above, born in 1941 or earlier, go on our site and sign up. Each of these major community sites have potentially 1,400 doses per week. So they are dividing it up per two days, so that they have potentially 700 individuals or appointments that they can make. So we give seniors some time, and we need to kind of see how the flow goes. These individuals can take more appointments, and remember, three weeks from now, we'll have secondary dose appointments at the same site. So that will then double the amount of people who come through, because then those with secondary dose needs will have to come back. We also have given doses to each of the federally qualified health centers, Charles Drew, One World, and Fred Leroy, 200 doses to each and 250 to One World. And if they need more doses, we will provide them more doses. There is no question about it. We want them to serve their patients, but some of them are also willing to serve people from their community only. So we'll see how that goes. Then we have an agreement with Methodist. They have the diabetes ban, and we are giving them about, I think, 100 or close to 100 doses this week. They go to different sites every week, and so they'll take those doses with them. And we are starting a smaller pilot with Hy-Vee Pharmacy, one on North 30th Street and one on 51st and Center. These two pharmacies are only wanting about 80 to 100 doses a week, because they just want to see how the throughput works in these pharmacies. So we are happy to work with them. And then Coles Pharmacy, who also has been an excellent partner, they are getting close to, I think, 700 doses, because what they are doing, they are going to independent senior facilities, where they are going to vaccinate the entire facility there, and these seniors do not have to come in and drive to one of the community sites. So what we are really trying to do, and I do think it is probably one of the best practices, that you are trying to have multiple options for people to get vaccinated, not just one, not just one big area where people have to stand in line for two hours or longer. What we are seeing in our appointments is that we potentially are going to have some open appointments, and therefore, at the end of this week, we are now going to open it up then for the next five years, for those 75 years and older. And that's what we will do. We'll always make sure that everybody, that the seniors will have the first one, so to say, for the appointments. But if we have opening, then we go to a lower age group and to a lower age group. At the same time as of today, as you have heard the state say, we potentially put 90% of our dose allotment towards seniors. And about 10%, we put towards those classes that go into the tiers below. So this week, we are starting to vaccinate also our law enforcement, because they are the first level in the next tier. And our law enforcement is a large workforce, and we are trying to be step in step with Lincoln. Us and Lincoln, we talk a lot. We want to do the same thing at the same time, because all these groups are talking to each other. So that will start to this week, and then we'll go down further, correction, homeless shelters, and we'll get to educators and utility workers. That's kind of my update for today. I'm not sure if you are interested. I just can share with you, we have, in Douglas County, not excluding the big pharmacy program, but in Douglas County, we have given 46,320 vaccines as of this morning, 34,109 are first doses, and 12,211 are second doses already. So 2.86% of Douglas County residents are fully vaccinated at this point. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Poor. Let's see, we have Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
Yes, just a couple things. A lot of it has to do with logistics. But before we get to that point, can you tell me, have we seen a decrease in numbers in nursing homes now that we have them vaccinated?
Commissioner Boyle, that's a very good, very good question. What we know from nursing homes, that all of them have potentially received the first dose. But that's just the first dose. There is still a lot of work that needs to be done for the second dose. So it is a little bit too early to already talk about the effects that we have seen. We have seen, however, some good results from nursing homes. And I just got a report yesterday where the cases have really decreased. And it's probably a combination, you know, monoclonal antibodies have been widely used in Nebraska, so that plus vaccination hopefully had an impact, and we hopefully will see further decreases.
Good deal. And then also, just as an aside, I think a lot of the issues we know with nursing homes has to do with the staff not being vaccinated at the rate that other healthcare professionals do. But I guess, and then the next thing I wanted to just mention, a lot of it has to do with logistics, like I said. Are there any efforts to do something like Coles is doing, where we're going out into smaller homes, assisted living facilities, number one? Number two, is there a thought to have like drive-through vaccinations, just like the COVID testing is done?
So I'm going to take the second question first. Yes, there are going to be plans for drive-through vaccinations, but probably not until March or April, when the weather gets better. So we are already planning right now where Test Nebraska potentially could change over then to be a vaccination site instead of a testing site only. But the weather needs to be warmer, because you have to wait 15 minutes and just for staff to be there. So that's the first thing. The second thing, are we going to have like what I would call strike teams to go out in certain neighborhoods? Yes, we do. We have some vans that we are purchasing and that we have ordered many, many, many weeks ago. And we are going to plan with those to go into neighborhoods, yes.
Okay. And those are all things that will happen then, I assume, as the weather gets better?
Exactly. And Nebraska Medicine also has offered a van that they would be able to go into communities. So all of this will be, you know, once we have more vaccine, I think we'll have more ability to do different ways of reaching the community.
Good. My big concern, of course, is getting this to the communities of color who are increasingly impacted, not only because of their roles as essential workers a lot of the time, but also because of the comorbidities they may have. But I think the other thing is we have to make an extra special effort to get to folks that can't get to us, things that are barriers, or things like the website. Some people don't have access to that, so won't be, or don't hear about it, don't know, for example, this Creighton facility is open on Saturday. And I think that should be targeted to those communities and populations that need the vaccine the most. So I think we have to figure out a way to make some type of effort to really reach out to the communities in North and South Omaha, to let them know that vaccines are coming their way, and then how, and even that there is a facility right now on Saturday that's going to be open for access to start getting vaccinated.
Correct. So we have reached out to community leaders in North and South Omaha to get the message out, and Commissioner, one of the commissioners already has done, Commissioner Rogers has done some of it yesterday already, and we are doing more. You know, the FQHCs are really trying to get messages out. They're trying to get messages out in South Omaha, too. And we are trying to look for more sites in North and South Omaha and are just in discussion right now.
Thank you very much.
Next is Commissioner Kavanaugh, and then Commissioner Mike Boyle.
Thank you. Thanks, doctor. I think last week, when you briefed this, you indicated that Douglas County was receiving something like 6,600 doses a week. And I just did a quick math on the numbers you just gave, and it looked like we were at about 70 to 50. Has the dosage allocation for Douglas County increased?
Yes, it has. And you are getting an A for math. Definitely, you know, and this is, this is what is always a little bit difficult about this, is that we don't have a pure certainty about the amount of doses. So Friday, late Friday afternoon, we got the word from the state that they have some returns from big pharmacies, and therefore, they had some more visor product that they were providing to us. So we got a bump up in doses last week, which was, which will take any day, any time.
That's great. The law enforcement, you indicated that you're moving into, that's good. Do you have a number on that cohort of law enforcement individuals that you'll be vaccinating?
Yes. The total number, or around, not the total number, but it's about 3,000 people that we would need to vaccinate. So we'll see what we have left over in addition to this week. So I would hope at least we'll do about 1,500 this week, especially since we had the special allotment to us.
That's great. And this is a bit of an overlap. We've spoken about this before. The judiciary just sent out... The judiciary just sent out a notice, I don't know if this went to everybody, but it went to all lawyers, that they were canceling civil jury trials in March. That's going forward two months. And we've talked about our initiative going to the criminal justice system because it's basically stymied by its inability to hold jury trials. Have we had any progress on that? I know that a portion of this is law enforcement because we have, you know, sheriff's deputies and police officers in our courts. Have we, have we had any progress getting the judiciary vaccinated so we can get our justice system back and up and going?
You know, not so much the judiciary, but of course if these individuals belong into the age groups that we are vaccinating, or if they are law enforcement, they would actually fit in. Correction staff, yes, they will, they will be vaccinated pretty quickly at this time.
Okay. And just in your own bailiwick, the Douglas County Health Department, you as the director, have you been able to receive vaccinations?
Yes. The health department, actually public health is in tier five of phase one A.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Good morning, doctor. I wanted to follow up a little bit with some of the law enforcement. I didn't hear whether you were the, I've assumed that's the Omaha Police Department, Omaha Fire. I'm, does that include the Douglas County Sheriff's Office as well and volunteer fire departments in Douglas County?
Absolutely.
Okay. Oh, that's, so they're, they're going to be getting their shots very soon?
Yes.
Okay, great. Then I wanted to ask about, we're still getting plagued by the comments that the governor made that were kind of awkward, where he suggested that immigrants were not going to be able to get inoculated. I think what he was talking about was that there are no undocumented people at the packing houses and then he made some comment that spilled over that I'm not going to repeat because it just confuses matters. I just would like you to clarify that we are, no one is checking citizenship when a person shows up to get a vaccine. Is that correct?
Nobody is checking any documentation in regards to driver's license, citizenship or so on. As a matter of fact, you know, I'm getting criticized quite a bit because we have cheaters and people are saying, why are you not checking, for example, driver's license or so on? And, and we are not. We are not. I really, I depend on the honesty of individuals who, when their time comes, then they go and get vaccinated. We will not check documentations. We have been very, very clear on this.
Well, if you'd like, you can use what, what I say and I've gotten criticism too and not as much as you, I'm sure, but what I say is all we look to is, we look to see if they're a human being and they're created in God's image and likeness and they have an arm that needs a shot. So that's what I'm saying. And anyone who is, shows up and is in, qualifies under the rules of who's supposed to be showing up, gets a shot because they are children of God, is what I'm saying. So there you have it. And I, so I appreciate your attitude and I know you take a lot of heat. Also, let's see, I did want to clarify, Commissioner Maureen Boyle asked you about Creighton University and I know people have to have, have, they have to sign up and have a reservation to get a shot. You can't just show up at Creighton, right? It's another site?
Yeah. Especially, you know, we want to do it by appointment only. So these seniors don't, do not have to wait in line. That's really the purpose of it.
Right. Okay, so, but everybody does have to have an appointment, is that correct?
Correct. Everybody does need to have an appointment, but if they do not have internet, there is our information line, four 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 thirty-four hundred, where people can call and they get assisted to, we'll make, we'll assist them to make an appointment.
Okay.
So we have made hundreds of appointments for people.
Okay, that's great. Well, thank you very much. You're doing a terrific job, a lot of pressure and I, hopefully we're getting more and more vaccine, which is a, a good thing and I rely on Commissioner Kavanaugh's math, so, and yours. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Rogers?
Dr. Poor, can you reiterate? I got a, a call, can you reiterate just, for instance, right now we're doing eighty and over, but I got a call from a couple of people that are seventy-five and they have underlying conditions. How, how are we handling that in regards to this right now?
Okay, so those, Commissioner, those who are seventy-five, born in nineteen forty-six or before, they potentially can go on the Douglas County website on Thursday, this coming Thursday, February fourth. And we'll open the site for that age range, potentially, we hope, by nine o'clock in the morning. So, you know, they can go on there. Let's not all go at the same time because otherwise the site is going to crash again as it did last week. So I would encourage people, you know, during that day or on Friday, they can start making appointments. I think what we are seeing is we are planning it so that there are enough appointments for everyone to get, to get on there in an orderly fashion. And once we are finished, now back to your question, Commissioner Rogers, once, once we are finished with the seniors, the next group then is those eighteen to sixty-four years old with underlying condition. And what we are asking of those people, we are asking to sign up on the state website. And the reason for that is, is the state website is using a very specific algorithm that identifies then those individuals to make an appointment. We don't have that capability on our website. Our website really, and our appointment schedule was made as an in-between until the state website is out.
So next week, it'll go down five years to where they can go to the, I mean, Thursday it'll go down five years where the seventy-five and under can go. And I know I, I remember us talking, so every, is it every week or sometime period, it'll go down five years each week or something like that till you get to the sixty-five, the general sixty-five and over?
That, that's what we are hoping. But I also need to share with you, we'll look every, every week. If all the appointments are full for three weeks, we won't open it up for the next cohort. You know, we'll only open it up when we see we have appointments. Now we can go to the next group.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Mike Boyle, is this your second time?
I, I need to follow up on something that occurred just now. I'm waiting my turn. I haven't tried to get ahead of anybody or anything else. I'm seventy-seven and I have some underlying health problems. So on Thursday, do I go to the state site or to the county site and get an appointment? Which one do I go to sometime after Thursday at nine o'clock?
Commissioner Boyle, if you want to have an appointment next week or the week thereafter, you go to the Douglas County Health Department website.
Okay.
And make an appointment. Because on the state website, you cannot make appointments yet. So you're just going to be sitting there. So I would encourage you Thursday or Friday, go on the Douglas County Health Department website and make your appointment.
Okay. And if there's, if someone does not have a computer, they should call four oh two four 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 thirty-four hundred, correct? Three four zero zero? And they could do that to make a, to make an appointment to get a shot sometime after nine o'clock Thursday morning?
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, that's great information. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner, or, thank you, Commissioner Boyle. And Dr. Poor, with the new COVID strains that are out there, if someone gets vaccinated for the original strain that, that we are getting vaccinated for, but now these new strains are there, does that mean that they could potentially be, get it again and because these vaccines aren't working for the new strains that are out there?
So the, the three new strains, you know, out of UK, South African, Brazil. It seems like the visor vaccine and Moderna, both of these vaccines are protective against those two, against these three strains. I think where we have discussions, where the scientists have discussion is on the, the Chancin and Chancin vaccine that is up for approval potentially later on this month. That vaccine was tested against the South African strain and was only, I think, fifty-six percent effective. So there is some question and that is why, you know, we need to vaccinate individuals as quickly as possible, as many as possible and in the, in, at the same time, still wearing masks, social distance, hand washing, stay home when you are ill. So, because we don't know. I mean, that's what viruses do. They mutate. That's what they do. They are trying to find a host and then they are trying to adapt to it and change. So we'll move quickly, but so far the information is that these two vaccines that have been approved are protective against those three variants.
Thank you, Dr. Poor. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Poor? And again, we appreciate these updates and I just think it's important, even if it's just little bits and pieces of info you give us on a weekly basis to keep us all updated because we get lots of, lots of calls or emails and social media posts that have actually a lot of inaccurate information and so this is helpful. So thank you very much for being available.
Can I have a talking, Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Ben Zalazar, who's on Zoom. You have five minutes and at one minute I will let you know that it's at one minute.
I don't want to speak five minutes, but thank you for the invitation and good morning, Dr. Poor and everyone else. Let me, can I, I just wanted to add one tidbit of information that might be relevant to some other listeners or viewers, and that's for veterans. As a seventy-five-year-old veteran, which I am, I called three, three or four weeks ago to the VA because I received some information from a friend or colleague or somewhere that the VA hospital also had some doses of vaccine available for the veterans. So when I called, now they didn't make the pitch out to the veterans through their various platforms, as far as I know. I called on the initiative of a friend of mine and asked, are you guys having vaccines available for veterans? And they said, yes, we're glad you called, we'll set you an appointment if you're seventy-five and over and of course a veteran. So I received my first dose two weeks ago. I will receive my booster Thursday this week. But for the veterans, take the initiative because if you're not hearing this from the VA hospital, which I didn't, take, take the time to call in to see what their stratification is for vaccinations. I don't know if they're doing it the same way in Douglas County, but for us vets, take the initiative and call the, call the VA hospital. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Zalazar. Any other folks on Zoom wanting to make a comment or ask a question of Dr. Poor? All right. Thank you very much and again, thank you, Dr. Poor, for your time. We'll move on to committees, the first being the finance budget report. And again, it's in your packet unless anyone has any comments they want to make, either one of the chairs.
Mary Ann, we do have a budget retreat this week.
Yes.
You might announce that in case.
Okay, February fourth is our budget retreat and you all should have got, received information on that. It will be out on, at our one hundred and fifty-sixth and Maple location and it will also be available via Zoom.
Open, open to the public?
Yep, open to the, absolutely, open to the public. Yes, sir. All right. We will move on to human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. And then next is our legislative issues. Again, your, the report from our lobbyist is in your packets. And then Commissioner Rogers wanted to talk about LB five eighty-six. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask, I think Marcos just passed around the bill. Kim's here, if you got any questions in detail, but I'd like to ask the board to support it because it does three things. One, it makes references in the bill to changing a lot of the references from truancy to absenteeism. And basically what it does is a conversation that's been had for a while of having status offender kids taken out of a certain realm where they won't be going to probation. And that will allow probation, juvenile probation to spend time on more serious offenses instead of these status offenders that have to do with absenteeism. Also, second, it should, it should provide for realms of where some diversion program has to start with the help of the county attorney's office. And then lastly, it will add, well, I think it will, is it ten million dollars? It will add ten million dollars to the community-based aid fund that's given out to counties by population percentage to address this matter of trying to get services more upfront. So the hearing is this Friday and it's consistent with everything that we've been doing. So, you know, I'd ask if there could be a motion to support it. I'll, I'll make a motion to support it.
Is there a second? And just for clarification, it is LB five sixty-eight. I think I said five, I think I said five eighty-six when I introduced it, but it's LB five six eight. Any other questions or comments on this legislative piece? There was a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Please vote.
Voting yes, PJ.
I vote yes.
Motion passes six to one. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Morgan voting yes virtually, Commissioner Fran voting no in person and all other commissioners voting yes in person.
There was one other legislative bill that's been brought to my attention, actually our attention, from Senator McColister's aide that I would ask that we take a neutral position on, and that is LB two six seven. And it basically has a, well, it does have a hearing on February fourth and our lobbyist will appear on our behalf since that is during our budget retreat. But basically, the legislative aide said the intent is to make existing governmental consolidation statutes reflective, reflect that cities in Nebraska are now reaching the metropolitan class and these statutes should be revised with that in mind. Their goal is to introduce this bill and to try to work with any and all stakeholders over this interim to amend the bill to best address concerns that will arise. And so I think it's best if we take a neutral position, wait until we see what ideas or issues they bring up that they want to make changes to that LB two six seven with. And so with that, I would ask the board to have our lobbyist attend the hearing and speak on a neutral position for Douglas County. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Commissioner Boyle has a question.
Why, why are we neutral on this?
Because basically the legislative aide says that during the interim, they're going to speak with everybody to determine what changes they want to make. And we want to be at the table. We don't want to send the message that we're opposed, but we don't, in my opinion, want to present that we support because we don't know what they're presenting yet.
Okay.
But we want to show Commissioner McColister that we are willing to be at the table and work with him during that interim to, to make those decisions.
Good. Well, that's, I, I think like most of us, it really trusts Senator McColister, so I just want to be sure we're expressing appropriate support. Okay, good deal.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
Do we need to vote?
Yep. Please vote.
Voting yes, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Morgan and Kavanaugh voting virtually, all other commissioners in person.
I would like to announce also that there'll be an HR committee meeting immediately following our county board meeting next Tuesday. our county board meeting next Tuesday to go over legislative items that people would like to have some more in-depth conversation or proposals that we might give our lobbyists or Marcos to write up so that the senators know where we are with some of that legislation, some that obviously haven't had a hearing yet or have been scheduled for a hearing. So that will be next Tuesday, directly following the county board meeting. With that, we have one other item under here, and that is Item Three, Resolution Requesting That the Douglas County Election Commissioner Take the Necessary Actions to Provide Registered Voters in City of Omaha the Opportunity to Vote in, By Mail in the Upcoming Mayoral Primary. And Commissioner Boyle, I'm going to let you go ahead and introduce it. It's your item.
Okay, well, as usual, my fun with computers, I can't sign in, so I can't really read the resolution.
Oh.
Nothing new, and my hammer isn't here either, so I'm kind of in a mess here. But anyway, the resolution is a very important one, and I have contacted the mayor's office. I haven't heard a response yet, but I have contacted, I received, as I think a lot of, a lot of voters did, a card from the mayor telling us, attention, Omaha voters, check your mailbox and secure your vote. Your early voting card from the Douglas County Election Commission, Commission will be arriving soon. When it arrives in late January, fill it out and return it as soon as possible to receive your mail ballot for the Omaha municipal elections on May sixth, sixth and May eleventh. So it is very important because the COVID is still a very serious problem in our community as it is around the United States, anyway, and certainly other, other countries as well. But looking right here at our own community, it's, it is slowing down somewhat, the hospitalization, but it's still a very serious matter, and, and so we need to respond and act appropriately. So that's why I've offered this resolution for the voters to be able to get a card at their home, and they can fill it out and return it to the election commissioner so that they can receive a ballot at home and don't have to venture out. Many of us are not doing that. This is about the only public meeting that I go to, and matter of fact, it is. So I do have an amendment to the resolution, and since I don't have it right in front of me here, I'll have to, I guess, just ad lib the ending of it. But what I, what I'm adding or amending it to is that as the COVID virus, oh, thanks a lot. What I'm changing is, thank you very much, Commissioner Borgerson, that the amendment or the resolution is, whereas this board desires that all registered voters in the city of Omaha be given the opportunity to vote by mail in the upcoming mayoral primary and general election, and whereas this board desires to provide the Douglas County Election Commissioner with the necessary budget dollars to effectuate this request, now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby requests that the Douglas County Election Commissioner take the necessary actions to provide all registered voters in the city of Omaha the opportunity to vote by mail in the upcoming mayoral primary and general elections. And be it further resolved, and this is that amendment, that as the COVID virus has caused the need, the city of Omaha use COVID funds for this important purpose. The approximate cost should be in the neighborhood of sixty-three thousand dollars. And I have, as I said, I've contacted the mayor's office, but we haven't nailed that down, but I, I do think that that's appropriate, and they are receiving COVID funds from the federal government, and it is a legitimate use. So I would ask for a motion to approve, and then we can send this on.
Are you making that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Let me just be clear, Mike, you, I'm interpreting that to say that we're asking the city to use their money to fund it.
Yes.
Okay, yep, I see.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
So that was my question also.
Okay.
Madam Chair, were you just voting on the amendment or the whole resolution with the amendment that?
Whichever way you want, it's okay with me, whichever's best for you.
I'm going to look to Commissioner Rogers as our parliamentarian.
If there's unanimous consent to accept it, then we don't really, that counts as a good.
Okay.
If nobody, yeah.
Nobody's objecting to the amendment?
Nope.
All right, we will go ahead and vote on the item as amended.
That's fine. Thank you.
Please vote.
Voting yes.
Could we, I apologize, Madam Chair, can you tell me who the motion and second was on that?
It was, motion was made by Commissioner Mike Boyle and seconded by Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you very much.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Morgan, I was speaking over you. What, how did you vote?
Voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Morgan voting virtually, all other commissioners in person.
And I do just want to make a quick statement so people understand that we are requesting the election commissioner to do this, as the city will probably be doing it through their resolution today at 2:00 PM.
Yes.
At their city council meeting, but I want people to understand that we cannot tell or mandate the Douglas County Election Commissioner to do something. So I just needed to make that statement because I've received lots of feedback that we have to tell him what to do, and we, we don't, and I, and I want to make sure that, that our election commissioner understands we are not trying to tell him what to do, we are requesting that he do this.
But if he doesn't do it, no, I'm just kidding.
With that, I did, I did have a request from Public Service Commissioner Crystal Rhodes to speak during the legislative stuff, and I did not call upon her, so I'm calling upon her right now if she's available. If not, we can certainly get what her concern or issue was. I'm sure it has to do with our surcharge. Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Yes, I'm not speaking to them. I do want to speak about a different matter on legislation. I forgot when I was getting this resolution put together, making phone calls.
Okay, why don't you go ahead since we do not have?
Okay. Really, it's two words, sports betting, sports betting. I think we need to express our support. The senator from Albion, I believe, has introduced a bill.
I am still here, Mary Ann, but the issue that I, I wanted to speak with you about has already been resolved, so thank you very much for, for the opportunity, but the matter has been dispensed with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. Okay, and Commissioner Boyle, on the issue that you're speaking of?
Yes, it's sports betting, and I'll leave it up to Marcos to tell us what number that is at some point in time, but it's really important. Sports betting, I'm not a gambler. I do buy Powerball, haven't won anything yet, but if it was, Maureen and I wouldn't be sitting here, but anyway, no. Anyway, so, but anyway, sports betting, it goes on constantly, and it's, you know, it just happens. And so now, it's on television, and I'm watching more television than I have, and there's ads on local television to place bets on everything under the sun, boxing matches and football games and, you know, who knows what. So anyway, I think we need to get in on the action because we have people now in Douglas County, I believe, who are able to use their smartphone to place bets in Iowa, so this is really out of control. We need to get a piece of the action, to be honest with you. It is not dirty money, it's being spent and bet it and bet, and so we need in on the action, and the counties, I think, need to have the proceeds from it. The state is usually flush with money, and now they're trying to put a lid on us, so I think we need to step up and try to get some of this money for operations of corrections and other expenses that we have that are so, three hundred million dollars in judicial costs every year for Douglas County and the city of Omaha combined. So I'd like to see us support sports betting.
Commissioner Boyle, we were, speak on that during our HR committee. I'll get, have Marcos get us the number and background of the bill for next Tuesday. Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
With that, we do have need for an executive session. I was trying to remember, it was for litigation. I'm going to have Patrick come down, and I think it's everything except for union negotiations.
So you have litigation and legal advice and contract negotiations, but we don't have, we don't have union contract negotiations, it's for other contract negotiations.
Right, okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Voting yes, PJ.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Morgan and Kavanaugh voting virtually, all other commissioners in person.
You going upstairs?[1218.21]